Okay, welcome back everyone. We are returning to executive session. If I can just have a motion to close exec and open our public session, please. Thank you, Francine.
I'll second that motion.
Jason, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Okay, if I can just ask everyone to stand for the pledge. Oh, and you know, we have our student representatives here today, so if you could do this in the pledge, that would be great.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, you can give us a statement with administrative remarks. Dr. Gash, do you want to go first, or?
I'd love to, thank you. Good evening. We wanted to provide the board some data on learning choices that our families have chosen for their sons and daughters. So today, of course, we welcome all students back with our virtual open arms. The latest breakdown is as follows. So across the four buildings, about 23% of our students have elected to be in the all-remote model. At JFK and CB Star, we have 26% and 27% respectively. Middle school and high school, 21%. So it's a little bit higher than what we had thought, but our principals and assistant principals and directors have done an outstanding job making sure that this works. So huge thank you to our administrators, our staff, and of course, to the community for the support and partnership. I have several COVID-related updates. First is, last Thursday, the governor submitted a statement that said that school districts were responsible for reporting the number of COVID cases to the Department of Health, as would show up on a statewide dashboard. We, as well as the Department of Health, are waiting further guidance on that. And of course, as soon as we receive that guidance, we'll be happy to comply and to update the board as to where we are. Second COVID-related update has to do with COVID coordinator trainings. So thanks for our partnership with Frank Ubilary of OSCE and the Department of Health. We have weekly ongoing COVID coordinator meetings and trainings. As a COVID officer for the district, they'll be attending. Dr. Kennedy is also assisting through her work with the nurses and Dr. Sarr. She'll be attending as well, which is very helpful to have two people sharing the information. This collaboration with OSCE and with the Department of Health has been essential to what we've done so far, and we're grateful for being able to move forward. And again, we'll keep you updated with any relevant changes and information. And finally, there have been some conflicting, there have been some conflicting information released about who's testing, who's tracing. Just a reminder, and this is posted in our contact tracing and our testing plan on our reentry site. We do not do any of those things. We partner with the Department of Health. We partner with local service for local medical professionals to do that sort of work. So we're happy to do whatever we can to facilitate that, but it's not our role to be testing students or to be conducting any sort of contact tracing. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Gage?
Okay, good evening. I will keep my comments brief. Just simply share congratulations to our fine administrative team, along with our department supervisors, for their tireless work ensuring our ability to open school with our first cohort today. I had the opportunity to walk each building and connect with each of our building principals and assistant principals. It was really a joy to see students and instructional staff at current campus. So I just want to commend all of our employees, certainly our teachers, our medical support, our SIU employees, with their effort in instituting new practices and procedures to promote safety and mitigate any potential risk for exposure to the virus. I want to thank our respective union presidents, Mr. Barrio, president of the AAV, Mr. Campbell, president of the SIU, majority medical unit, and of course, Mr. Timmin for their willingness to work in concert with the district and ensure our schools develop on them. Additionally, I had the opportunity to touch base with many of our new instructional staff and witness firsthand their enthusiasm and commitment to the children of Brewster. While the smiles of students and staff were hidden behind their required masks, given the realities are normal, their joy was nonetheless evident as new building practices and procedures were implemented on campus. And finally, really an acknowledgement to our facilities department, their tireless work to prepare our buildings, both with respect to cleanliness and the addition of new materials and resources to ensure greater safety for our staff and students. And I would be remiss without acknowledging Mr. Fryer, who was with us this evening, and Mr. Penny Lynch.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Grayson.
Good evening. Welcome back, students and staff. I'll also try to keep my comments brief this evening. Just want to touch on each of our three support service departments, starting with child nutrition. So a backpack went out this afternoon notifying families that the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, announced that it will be funding school districts to serve meals to all children at no cost to families in the fall months. This provides much-needed financial relief for families as we begin our reentry to the 2021 school year. And please note that this applies only to breakfast and lunch meals and does not include snacks or on-the-card items. So again, great news coming from the federal government that we're able to continue to provide nutritious meals to our students at no cost to families. Moving on to transportation. I also observed this morning, I was shocked at the efficiency on day one, given how challenging the reentry planning was in terms of transportation. So obviously, in terms of social distancing, it was a challenge, which evolved into our two-loop system. But again, I was so impressed that on day one, we were able to provide our transportation as efficiently as we were. As an annual reminder, we always have our caveat at the start of each school year. Please understand that actual pickup and drop-off times tend to lag behind scheduled times during the first few weeks of school. We kindly ask that you arrive early and be prepared and patient if buses are late. As students become more familiar with the arrival and dismissal routines, actual pickup and drop-off times will begin to normalize with scheduled times. And just an overarching reminder, safety is our first priority. Quickness is a distant second, which of course will come over time. But again, thank you to our facilities department for the work that they've done in such a short period of time, being able to come up with our double-loop system. Mr. Fryer is here this evening, acknowledging our facilities department. So as you walk the school buildings and the facilities, you'll notice a number of renovations that took place this, starting in the spring and over the summer, just to name a few. The JFK courtyard pavilion, and thanks to BEF and the PTSA for their assistance in that. Exterior doors were replaced at JFK. Air conditioning units were installed in the kindergarten classroom. Sinks were installed at all of our cafeterias to allow students the opportunity to wash their hands before and after meals, which we strongly encourage. The CB Star main entrance was completed. The high school picnic area outside the cafeteria was completed. And of course, the high school gymnasium received a total makeover, floors, wall pads, and LED lights. So again, thank you to the facilities department, especially Mr. Fryer, for all of their efforts. And with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the board members for their commitment and dedication to the district. Without your hard work and support, we would never be able to open today. I also wanted to thank the entire Brewster School community, staff, students, parents. Please bear with us. We appreciate your patience. We appreciated your patience right from March, as we worked through a different kind of reopening for us. And we really, really appreciate all of our parental support. On the athletic world, Mr. Barrio is going to be sending out, or Athletic Director will be sending out information via letter, section one has that. He has some specifics he'll be sending out regarding athletics, so stay tuned. It should be going out this week. And I also want to just ask our community that, you know, just please continue to protect, I'm going to say this, this is the theme. And Jen Gary and I have been working on this, our PR person from Public Network of Sports at OSCE. Please protect the Veredan. Wear your mask even if you're not in school. We really need everybody, students, staffs, families, families, to please help us in order to make sure our students are safe. The only way we're going to be able to stay open is if we're all in this together and we protect each other, even in the walkout. So I'm just respectfully asking that, members of the board, respectfully asking that of the community too. So thank you, and that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. And just for myself this evening, you know, first day of school. As a mom in the district, I personally saw that, you know, things weren't perfect, but that's okay. Because I see how great our staff is, and even in those moments, how they're just working to adjust and figure it out and make it happen. So I think, you know, we're all in just very different times, and we just have to be a little patient and understand that a lot of time planning has gone into opening. So there are going to be a few pickups along the way, but we're going to get there. And we'll just be patient, support each other, and help each other with information, and can we get it right? And we'll get there, I think it will be sooner than later. So thank you to everyone for, you know, the district for everything you're doing to just each day to get us to better and then to the next day. So it's great. And tonight, we have this year's student representatives. We have three assignments, but two this evening, I believe. So Kayla Fox and Diana, I think, is that correct? Perfect. So welcome, and what would you like to share with us tonight?
I'm Kayla, I'm a senior this year.
I'm Greg, I'm also a senior.
Our third member of college is a hero of Denver, who unfortunately cannot be reached. We're really excited to be here, to be part of this, part of our community.
So I had my first day of class virtually today. I started off in homeroom at 7:45. A little anxious, a little nervous. I've had, been a part of planning Zoom meetings this summer for various reasons, and I've had my fair share of technical difficulties. So I was very pleasantly surprised today with how smoothly everything went. I got into all of my classes, and my teachers were very prepared. And I think that eases a lot of students' first day of school anxiety, especially with how different it is this year. So I was very appreciative of that. And yeah, I had four periods, each like about an hour, and it went very well. I'm excited for the year.
And I have the privilege of being in class today in person and being a part of that with. And also, that obviously is not perfect, because the first day, I wasn't expecting it to be perfect. But I was definitely really impressed with, like you said, how well the teachers handled everything, seeing as this was a really good change for them. And a lot of them were similar to me, but you know, it was definitely a job well done, in my opinion, on Baby Pop. I also felt like everything was fairly well organized, you know, and everybody can build everything very well. So, you know, not perfect yet, but I think that we are definitely on the way to having a really good system. And Tosh, who's not here, he was digitally learning today, so he's a full digital student. And he was saying that he said everything went very smoothly. And he would also like to bring attention to the backpack, Donna Carter-Congress, and some other students, other company working with. Ms. Horler and Ms. Cole on teaching about equity to teachers in school districts. And kind of diversified the way things were going. So he just wanted to mention that that might be a completely under way process.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we move on to presentations, recognition, discussion. And first up is Champion of Change Award, NISCO representative.
Ladies and members of the board, this evening we have with us Mr. Patrick Longo from the New York State School Board Association. He is the Member Relations Manager. And I'm going to ask Dr. Gash to come up here, because she's been a big part of this wonderful program long before I got here. And Mr. Longo, should we call the two ladies up, or should, do you want to talk to the board first? Do you want to call Donna and Sarah up right away, or would you like to talk to the board first about the award?
So thank you for having us, I really appreciate it. Patrick Longo, I'm the Member Relations Manager at NISCO. And as you know, our association, everything we do tries to help you guys do better as a board, and then obviously, that trips us on to the district. And you probably know some of the services that we provide. You've probably seen Eclipse, we have the paper on board. And so one of the things that we try to do is we try to inform as best as possible what's going on around the state. And if you notice, sometimes we learn by seeing people's mistakes, as well as learn by their successes. And unfortunately, if you look at the news, sometimes there's just, you see a lot of bad news out there, negative news. And so about two years ago, we wanted to create a program where we actually recognize the great work that you guys are doing in the districts, just positive news. And so we created a program called Champions of Change for Kids. And so what we do is we look for programs all throughout the state, and we feel are making really great change through programming your school, for the kids in the school, and for your communities, and for your district. And I came across a program that caught our attention. And we have a committee, and just want to let you know, this is not solicited. So we just look out for your programs, and one came to my attention. It really was a close to home to my heart. And I have two special needs students, or my own kids who are students, special needs students. And so I saw a program that, we brought some committee, and we wanted to recognize you for it. And so on behalf of New York State School Association, our executive director, Bob Schneider, and our president, Fred Langstaff.
So Mrs. Donna Schneider, would you come out, and Sarah Barnes, and Dr. Rosh, and he'll let you jump in here also.
So this is the banner, and this banner serves as recognition of the program. It reaches Champions of Change for Kids, and we are honoring Bruce CSD, Board of Education, for their Bubbling Bears Laundry Service Program. So we'd like you guys to give yourselves, your staff, and your students a big round of applause. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you so very much for taking the time to award these two amazing ladies. And Bubbling Bears is one of the many programs that they do in the district for our students, and they are just incredible. And they've been an incredible lifeline for our students all throughout the pandemic as well. And Dr. Gash, did you want to add, maybe mention some of the other great programs they have?
Sure. We have been admiring Donna and Sarah for years. They are educators at the absolute top of their game, but they never settle, they're never satisfied. They just keep adjusting and adapting their craft. And whether it's speaking about the ESY program and how it could be done differently, whether it's about getting real-world experiences through the work programs that you created, through Bubbling Bears or the businesses that you created, or whether it's just creating a model for all of us, what you've done with this is learning the ESY. You have always kept kids at the center, your own example and a model for us all. So thank you both very much, and congratulations.
Just personally, on behalf of the board, I'd also like to say thank you. It's a great honor, but truly, it goes to the hard work of these two women and the students, you know, who they bring it to life. So thank you that this would happen, and we're just so honored that you, you know, can make it.
Can you just take a picture? Thank you, Lauren. Congratulations, ladies.
Next up, we have public use of school facilities during COVID-19. Mr. Paul?
Okay, good evening. So really, this is a discussion topic for the Board of Education. So as you're aware, we have a board policy which permits the use of public use of our facilities while school is not in session, so as not to interfere with any of our other extracurricular activities or athletic events. In light of COVID-19 and our efforts to keep our schools clean and disinfected, we are requesting that, or we are recommending that we restrict the use of school facilities, or internal use of school facilities, excuse me. However, continue to prevent the use of our exterior facilities and fields. Again, the intent is to make sure that we keep our school buildings clean and safe for our students to return the following day, but also afford the opportunity for community groups and, you know, athletic groups to use our external facilities at times that they're not in use by the school district. So again, this is really just a discussion topic that we wanted to bring to the board's attention. We've been receiving requests for the use of school facilities. One, as we began to research this, we learned that in the state's reopening plan, they've identified the responsibilities of school districts as well as facility users. We reached out to our attorneys, and they've drafted additional language which identifies the facility user group, ultimately as the party is responsible for ensuring that external parties are following CDC guidelines for distancing, you know, presenting, checking for symptoms and things of that nature. So again, this is, you know, discussion for the board that we wanted to present to you.
Victor, can I ask a question? So, and I agree, and I get it, but just to ask, if someone were to, were to allow someone to use our auditorium, or something, whatever, would it be, you know, they, and they have to pay for all of that sanitizing and all that, do you think it would still create a safe environment, you know, after the fact? Or is it still too kind of an uncertain situation to just let outside groups in?
Well, so the thinking behind it, obviously, again, we want to make sure that we keep, you know, after we've disinfected an area, we want to make sure that it remains intact until the following morning. So it would certainly, you know, be taxing on our facilities department. And that's actually, you know, one of the reasons why internally, at this point, we're not even permitting internal use of our facilities after the school day. So, you know, it's consistent with what we're doing, you know, internally, Brewster Central School District, in keeping, you know, again, keeping the facilities intact overnight. You know, if we did start to use it, I could see it being very taxing on our facilities department. Mr. Fryer is here, and he's probably petrified at the thought of it. So again, that's, you know, that's really the real reason is, you know, I think it would be probably too taxing on our facilities department to keep up with the facilities usage, because in a normal year, if you're in Brewster High School, you know, we're almost a 24/7 operation. There are things constantly happening in this school building in particular. I just don't know that we would have the capacity to keep up with. Is it, Mr. Fryer, are you here? Is there anything you'd like to add?
I think it's fair you also point out that our own students aren't staying out for school for extended periods of time. You know, so how can we open up for other groups? Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure. What kind of groups are asking for permission? Are they, like, just about town?
Yeah, yeah, local groups. That we typically have, you know, soccer, you know, it's like football things.
Any group that could be, additional labor costs, everything. Most of the groups that use our facilities, let's say on the lower end of the spectrum of financial side. So I mean, burden, if that would have put on them to, put on the show, you know. Would be, there'll be some groups that we just, maybe only want to have the pockets or resources. Set back, that would probably be easier on the school, isn't that a lot?
I don't disagree with your retell. I always like to know what they're, because the financial impact would be different, if I saw these outside groups.
I don't disagree with the restriction, especially if we allow internal folks to use. However, has there any financial impact on the district, assuming these outside groups paid to use the facilities?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So the way our use of facilities, fee structure is structured, it's really sort of a district crazy. We certainly don't make any money on the use of school facilities. There, you know, of course, there are costs involved, you know, rental fees involved, but those rental fees generally just cover the cost of operation. The school district certainly does not make a profit on use of facilities.
Victor, so you had said for outside, though, that there'd be consideration to allow that to happen. We have a fee structure currently in our policy, right?
Yes.
But with COVID, I mean, we still, I would think there'd be still some, we're using a field, and the teachers are being, saying bad stuff. So if the cost go up, we need to be about your policy?
Well, I mean, the fee structure, the fee structure would remain intact. There is no fee for rental of the field, really, the only fees are for the use of the turf field. And then, and then there's also a fee for the use of the concession and the concession stand. And those would remain intact. So really, the only, the only change in terms of our practice would be, we would just restrict the areas that could be used, and really only allow the use of external facilities.
Right, but the cost that we currently have in place didn't, in that new structure for outside, given it's concession stand, do we need to then sterilize the whole concession stand after that, so that increases the cost?
Yeah, the concession stand would definitely pose an issue in the same manner an internal facility would pose an issue. So the concession stand would probably, would probably be an issue that we wouldn't want to allow access to that either.
Just, I guess, let's just keep track of if we're somehow going past, because we have to sterilize something, and our fee structure isn't covering that, and whenever we're using it, just to keep it in mind. We might have to revisit it.
Right.
But right now, the session stand is not open.
It would not be used, that would be considered an internal location.
If the field schools finally need back to operation, I know a lot of people have gotten used to coming down here, using our trap, walking through areas. Do we have to be put outside to let people know you can't come down during the end of school concession on these doors? It's going to hurt.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mr. Fryer about that. I know that there are signs, I feel like we have, you know, a million signs, but a million signs don't necessarily mean that people are reading them. So we'll reinforce that, we'll, you know, have to talk to Mr. Fryer and possibly our SROs just to reinforce the.
It's kind of detracting, because those are what people are used to. Like, the policy, we can't do it during the school day, just got to make sure that there is something that, no. Like, it's sounds good, but it has to be.
Any other thoughts?
Okay, I just want to thank you, and just remind the board that a little bit, in regards to those, sorry, you know, seats, Dr. Sarah, our medical director.
Okay, so we're good with this discussion? Okay. We move on now to fiscal update regarding COVID-19.
Okay, so forgive me, because I don't have a projector available to me here. I will all announce the slide that I'm on as we, as we go through it. I've embedded the presentation in Board Docs. So one of, one of my goals for this year, and discussed goals at subsequent meeting, is to continue to keep the board and the community updated on the fiscal impact of COVID-19. So certainly, operationally, a lot of things are different this year. And of course, everything has a financial impact, so I want to.
Hold on a second, I'm sure everyone has to log into the Board Docs to get to this live presentation. Okay, and then just for the community who are watching, it's bringing and sharing for a few right there. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. So moving on to slide two. So we discussed this during the budget process. So as far back as the month ended, March 31st, 2020, our business office completed a fund balance projection. And we were pleasantly pleased to present a fund balance projection of about $3 million for the year ended 2020. And that was due in part to the sale of Garden Street Elementary School, as well as the cost avoidances associated with the extended closure that lasted from about mid-March through the end of June. With that surplus, the Finance Committee and Budget Advisory Committee had a combined meeting to discuss the use of our anticipated surplus. And a decision was recommended to lower the tax levy from 2.5%, which was our tax cap, down to 1.5% to provide relief for our community. We also used that surplus to pre-order. Uh we also use that surplus to pre-order certain PPE. And then also set aside the remainder of that surplus for future use. Uh in accordance with the fund balance plan again, which was reviewed by our Finance Committee and our Budget Advisory Committee. So that's the good news. Um anticipated reopening costs. So uh going into the budget season. Uh we knew that we were going to have to uh order additional PPE. We knew that we were going to need additional uh technology in terms of software and hardware for both in-person and remote learning. And also through the through the budget process. Um we requested three additional teaching positions, a JFK special education teacher, a CBSTAR bilingual T-Sol teacher. And a Wells Middle School Social Studies T-Sol teacher. Those were our anticipated reopening costs. Uh certain um unanticipated reopening costs are listed here. It's certainly not an exhaustive list, but just to provide some. Uh perspective, we uh I mentioned earlier, uh hiring part-time cleaners to address high-touch areas uh throughout the school day. The double loop transportation system, which is certainly going to um create additional costs in terms of diesel fuel and gasoline fuel. Uh also associated with the double loop transfer transportation that is the additional supervision before and after school. And finally, um childcare provision number five of the CARES Act, which is provided for paid needs of absences for staff for various reasons. And again, this is a non-exhaustive list, but just to give. Uh some perspective of some of the challenges that we face in terms of our reopening. On the other side of the coin, some of our uh uh cost avoidances from reopening. Uh this summer, we unfortunately had distance learning for our extended school year programs. So if we learn through distance learning. There are cost avoidances in terms of transportation, uh one-to-one aides, uh things of that nature. Uh we also learned of a number of out-of-district students who opted to return in district, either in remote or or in-person settings. Um unfortunately, uh uh third bullet, um limits of the on the viability of clubs, athletics, and before and after school programs. So certainly. It's um you know, not um you know, not. We're certainly not happy about it, but there is a financial benefit uh for these programs not to run. Um and then lastly, retirements and resignations uh as uh cost avoidances in reopening. Moving on to uh the following slide, slide six. Is really the the major point of this presentation. So those other those previous lines really count. Uh comparison to the magnitude of the state aid uncertainty. So we discussed this throughout the budget development process. New York State uh informed us recently that they would begin withholding twenty percent of education aid. Uh applicable to all seven hundred thirteen school districts in New York State. So. Uh again, this is about four million dollars, which is an incredible uh number for the state to to withhold uh over the course of the school year. Uh for four million dollars, just for perspective, in terms of our total budget, it's about four percent. Uh in Brewster, this translates to three hundred fifty thousand that they withheld from the nineteen twenty receivable. So if we go all the way back to our first slide, which presented our um anticipated surplus. We were actually very, very close uh with our initial projection way back in March. Uh we were just informed in late August that the state was not only going to withhold money from the twenty twenty-one school year, but they were actually going back. And they withheld three hundred fifty thousand dollars from the twenty nineteen twenty school year. Four million dollars is again about twenty percent of our aid. Just again, for perspective, this is more than three times the effect of a contingency budget. So oftentimes, we talk about the fear of a contingency budget, how it takes. The better part of a decade for a school district to recover from a contingency budget. While the state threatening to uh cut twenty percent of our spending is is the equivalent of three times a contingency budget. So at this time, New York State has formally requested federal assistance. So our New York State representatives have. Uh send a letter to their counterparts in the federal government requesting assistance. Unfortunately, at this point in time, there are more questions than there are answers. So here are some of the, you know, the questions that we naturally have. Will federal assistance be provided? And if so. To what extent will it be provided? If it's a lesser amount, how much less will we receive? And also when will it be notified? Does the twenty twenty-one aid reduction represent a new baseline moving forward, or is the twenty twenty-one reduction simply a blip on the map? So we don't, we don't know that. And then finally, what measures could be taken now to mitigate the potential loss of aid? And more importantly, should measures be taken now, given the uncertainty of the situation? Next slide, uh slide eight. So here's what we're going to be doing moving forward. Of course, monitoring, reporting. Um in terms of advocacy, the New York State School Boards Association, the New York State Government have already. Um lobbied at the federal level level for assistance. Um we begin presenting twenty-one, twenty-two budget indicators uh in October, so just next month. I'm in the process of updating our long-range financial plan, which we review with our Finance Committee and also present to the Board of Education in November. And of course, we're going to continue to update the board as new developments come. So. Uh again, we just want to make sure that we are informing the board and the community of the possibility of this. At this point in time, it's a it's a withholding. It's not a final uh decision that we will not receive it. However. Given the financial condition of New York State, there's a possibility that this could come true. And 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 again, the you know, the frustration that we have is that we simply don't know. Um so really, we're we're in limbo now until a decision is made either at the federal level or at the state level. To give us some direction or indication of whether or not this will hold hold up. Any questions from the board? So it it. So this is challenging because it's on the it's on the it's it's a challenge on the revenue side of our budget. So if if all things were constant. We we would be able to finish out this school year. The concern is the the compounding effect of what this may look like, because again, we don't know whether or not this is a one-year blip. Or if this is a, you know, a new baseline moving forward. If it's a new baseline moving forward, it's going to have a uh significant impact on our on our program. Because the decisions will have to be made to reduce program. Prospectively, in order in order to accommodate this loss of revenue. Um so could things be done? Could things be done now? The answer, of course, is yes. But most importantly, should things be done right now? And the answer is, I don't know. Because, you know, personally, I I would hate for us to make a decision. And then eight months from now, or even six months from now, find out that we made that decision. And we didn't need to, and it hurt, you know, it hurt our program, it hurt our students. Yes, it it it's too early. We we simply don't know. And and you know, it it's frustrating because we're in limbo. And we're we're. You know, we're we're unable to move until we know, you know, what's ultimately going to happen. All right, I know that was a heavy one, so I'll pass it on now.
Well, we have, I have a quick question. Well, we have so many parents today throw their kids in and pick them up. Like, that could be a possible saving. That's not anticipated plus right now. Possibly not having to double loop every bus route.
True. Yeah, and ju- and just in terms of of transportation, that was an observation that we had. That was surprising to us. And you know, again, Dr. Gosh and and Dr. Van La did an incredible job putting out, you know, lots of parent surveys. And we felt that we had. Pretty good information heading into, you know, with the two or three weeks that we had to to prepare our uh our transportation assignments. Um we were surprised at the lack of participation in transportation. And you know, over time, in a in a normal year, we're always observing and, you know, uh changing routes and consolid consolidating routes if possible. So this year will be no different. We will continue to evaluate each route and consolidate where possible.
Can I step into your transportation here, sorry, and just give you two other considerations? Um one is that there were a few districts that opened last week. Um and they said that they saw increased participation. It was only three days, but first day, Harlan went with a bus. Next couple of days, that increased greatly. Um so I don't know if that's going to happen here, but that's a a consideration. Uh something else is that um that we discussed is that um Mrs. Smith, she does the um the route. Every student, other than how they take the bus, has to have a seat. Because there is an emergency, right, or we need to get students out of the building. Everybody needs to have a a. Um place to to go to get off campus. Um so that's something else that goes into into the plan.
If you're on now, then to public remarks, um if any come in. In advance of this meeting, that relates specifically to the action items at this time, we address them. Uh none came in. Eric, you want to make questions? Okay, so um. And then there's other comments we can address later. But for now, for action items, there were none that we uh we saw. So we'll move on to action items. And first up is. Whoever advised Schedule B to twenty twenty twenty-one SRO contract.
Yes, so this was just approved by the board at the last meeting. We were notified by Potomac County that they've revised their use of force policy. Uh we, of course, ran this by our attorneys to make sure that it was up to standard. Our attorneys responded and. Uh informed us that it was adopted based on section eight forty of the executive law, which authorizes the New York State Department. Or excuse me, the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services to create a model policy for municipal police departments. To align it for uh practices and standards for when force would be used. And alternate tactics for de-escalation of situations, which would be implemented. Um so it's a recommendation that the board uh adopt the revised Schedule B to the SRO contract.
Thank you. I need a motion for this item, please. Carrie, thank you. In a second. Eric? Questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we go to the vote. All of those in favor? Six, seven, none opposed, any opposed? Okay, so motion passes seven, zero. Move on to action number two, approval of twenty twenty twenty-one MS four. Slash NYCP compliance engineering services.
Yes, this is an annual agreement with our civil engineers for completion of our MS four stormwater compliance plan, which we're required to submit. Uh to the New York City Department of Environmental Protection. I want to note that inside engineering, our civil engineers have not raised their feet for the service um in quite some time. I believe seventeen eighteen is the last increase, and the total contract was six thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please. Fancy, thank you. And Carrie, your hand was up. For the second, I think you have questions or comments before.
I have one quick question. All the additional people, that is. Does that affect the need for a rain off?
It's the in that's what we hired inside for. They're the experts in terms in terms of stormwatering compliance with the.
Okay, seeing none. Um all those in favor? Seven, none opposed, motion passes seven, zero. Okay, action number three, approval of multi-tiered support plan.
Each year, we submit for your approval our multi-tiered system of support plan, which is a comprehensive approach to supporting student learning from social, emotional. And academic perspective. The idea is that it's not a weak fail model, but instead it's a it's a really static and proactive way to support student learning. Uh so the structure that each building has uh will support students, whether they are virtual or in person. It's even more important this year because we need to make sure that we we catch students um early on who aren't successful and and give them all that we can in order to support them. So please submit this plan for your approval.
Thank you. I need a motion for this item. Daisy, thank you. And Jason, second, thank you. Um questions or comments before? All right, seeing none. All of those in favor? Seven, opposed, no, motion passes seven, zero. Thank you. Approval of policies, second need, policy six one five zero, staff substance abuse. Policy six five five zero, need of absence.
Policies twenty fifty and sixty five fifty were discussed and approved for first read at our August eighteen board meeting. These policies have been reviewed by the policy committee. Please submit that for your second approval.
Thank you. I need a motion for this item.
I'll make the motion.
Jason, thank you. In a second. Eric, thank you. Questions or comments on the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Seven. No objections, motion passes seven, zero. Next up is approval of district-wide code of conduct.
Also, at the August eighteen board meeting, we held a public hearing for the draft code of conduct. Since then, we had asked for input from various constituent groups, and we did not receive any. Uh so this is an annual legal requirement. We are submitting it to you for your approval in the the draft on that it's up in in August.
Thank you. I need a motion for this item, please. Daisy, thank you. And Carrie, in a second. Questions or comments for board? Okay, uh seeing none, all those in favor? Seven. No objections, motion passes seven, zero. Okay, consent agenda. Anything you want to?
Uh sure, thanks. Because just uh this evening, the board and the public will know that we recommend Ms. Elizabeth Santan, this additional district transportation department. Dilingual Ms. Santan has been working as a full-time bus driver. And is impressed with her knowledge of district bus route, experience, professionalism. So we're certainly pleased to uh have her promote this evening. And also just a warm and sincere congratulations to Cynthia LaWine, our school nurse of JFK, who will be retiring at the end of the school year, over two days. So this is. We certainly look forward to having an opportunity to celebrate.
Thank you. I need a motion for the consent agenda. Um Fancy and Scott, in a second. Thank you. Questions or comments for the board on the consent agenda? Okay, uh go to the vote. All of those in favor? Seven. All, motion passes seven, zero. Okay, so public remarks. Um this time, I think we just got a late email in today. Let me know if this email just covered the one that came in before the meeting started today. Uh there were just some questions in there about um. Adjusted some of the things that they noticed during opening day. Uh and some questions. One, there were four questions. One was regarding recess and masks. The kids be allowed to play in school. I don't know if we have the answers here tonight, but um you know, masks seem to have been allowed to come off if the kid is socially distanced. Will they be allowed to? They're used to going outside and playing, so kind of.
Sure. So students are expected to wear the masks. Um it and that would be during recess as well. The only exception would be under supervision by a uh. Staff member who gives student permission to use, so they're at a socially distanced. Um social distance, appropriate social distance. Um and Dr. Saro has, of course, we've made all these decisions based on on his his input and guidance from from this. From the state. So students are outside at um at six feet. They're with a a staff member who's able to give them that. Um that permission, and they're able to take the masks off.
So therefore, they're not, they can't play, you know, whatever games the kid, I don't know. But those that organize, the kids organize themselves in games and stuff, they can't be there right now, just kind of go outside to air.
I mean, they should be able to, as long as they're not tackling or, I mean, as long as they're in.
And that would happen.
If you're in a club, that would happen, that would be. Uh and and we can work with, um I'm sure Mr. Clark and Mr. Nanda, so. You know, have thought that through, so we can make contact with them tomorrow.
Thank you. And then um. Just question on, and it seems like um there's still some questions out there on the. Remote learning that some of the kids are facing. And I'm I'm assuming that information will still come out through schools, but that there is still some question that we'll hybrid and. And uh I guess this would involve because they do electives on their remote days. Uh but it seems like now all kids are being able to access. Certain electives are.
Sure. So I know Mr. Clark said that's additional. additional clarifying information this afternoon. But what I, I mean, what I would say is, say one, I don't know that the elective would run every on-four day. Sometimes they're every other day in the month. But another thing that I would just like to broaden our attention to, there is, there should be time scheduled on those on-four days for core instruction. So we can't, if you just map every other day, it has to be mapped. And this is where we talked about the asynchronous activities. There have to be, there has to be work that is assigned to students so that we have this continuity of instruction. So that should be a good chunk of time in the students' on-four day. In addition to that, there would be some of those, you know, on-four classes. I think they differ for each of the grade levels. If there had to be changes, I'm sure it had to do with, you know, getting the in-person piece done. But we can send out additional clarifying information.
And do you have any?
So when they're doing their on-four classes, that's all, they should be checking their core classrooms because they could get work from those classes.
Absolutely. And that works to be an extension of what was done in-person in that small group that we before.
And then just the audio. This was part of the high school. Kids were, I guess, zooming in or whatever that some kids could hear the teachers, maybe because they were frightened, they still came around the room or whatever. So I'm not sure, we can't even prove on that, but.
Sure, so we thought on that, again, they won. But it's good, it's good feedback because we don't want it to go on for too long, the students staying there. And then as the student representative, they did here, the one student that was here, and she said she put. So what we'll do is we'll make sure that we are, I know Mr. Hill is working with his team on a couple of technology-related solutions for that. Maybe the characteristics of certain classes may be more difficult here. So we can make sure we can provide professional training. We can make sure we're surveying students, make it so that they give us feedback on how well they can hear, how often, you know, that it's a consistent volume. And we'll make sure our teachers are asking what's working for them and provide that support.
And then just part two with that was just, and again, game one. But I think teachers also have their own learning curve, but jumping all of it until it becomes kind of routine for everybody. But kids are waiting, you know. I think that was across the board. You know, everyone's trying to figure out how to get them to zoom and, you know, manage it all. So and then the chat feature. So it might be that if the kids at home are zooming in in that chat, they're allowed to engage somehow. Maybe there's a designated time. Okay, now we'll address the question that maybe at home. Not sure whether they might, because it seemed that was one of the questions that came up as well. Just let them ride in.
So I think if all the kids are late logging in and they're sitting waiting with the teachers teaching, understand, well, they don't see the person waiting.
Yeah, that could be an option. I know it's a security function, but we can, we can work that through. And that could be something else you add to the student surveys and ask staff to be honest about. I know that, you know, initially, when we were running some professional training as, with adults that were present and at home, we did the same thing. We, it was a learning curve, but the second, I agree, one was much better than the first. So we'll continue on for that.
And then just the last thing that was brought up was just for something to grow, and I'm sure it will drop off and pick up locations and times for parents. I think parents were different spots depending on the school that we're at. And I know it went out, and it's clear, but I think it actually came down, people are just so used to doing it over the past. Maybe just kind of an update or a reminder of the different schools and way to pick up the time and how it works. Again, if you have to go over it on, whatever.
Yeah, that's great. And I did speak with two principal schools who were clear about needing to make adjustments based on the number of people that it picked up. And if, you know, if it was more than they had thought. So we'll definitely do that. We'll make the adjustments. Probably want to see it through a cycle and then, you know, we'll make the adjustments and communicate that out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so we move on to board remarks now. Any updates? Where's yours?
The, most of the pounds, the last couple of people. This is like some other groups have established our federal representatives to ask for further additional assistance on any, for all terms. And they've asked from all the different schools to get about, possibly whoever that board, who was in the middle of the board, possibly post something on the school site to ask our parents if they have access to it. Which in much other sense, if you have more people that reach out, the more feedback, I reached out myself personally. And I definitely feedback on some of them. But maybe there's a way we can.
We've actually, yeah, we've done it in the past. We put, what, the resolutions are different? Just a letter, you know, that we can use. And they can just take it and send it and solve.
And you, you're, 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 and you get back. Breaking that, I think, right, let him know. Basically, build a screen.
So maybe it can help with a lead for something, just thinking about the aid situation. Yeah, we've done everything to that.
I, as a parent, I'd like to walk to get there. It was amazing. All my friends are horrible there, parents. I wouldn't say jealous, but they're, you know, I don't know how we're doing this. One day in, and it's like, yeah. But it's very impressive to see. They're working out, but so what? We're in school. Just got to get them, kind of need decorations from everybody. It's not always that teacher of the bus driver contacts with the parents and the students as well. You know, I just got to take a free job and do the speaking. And move on from that. And I just said it before, the census is due, I think, in a month. But there is anybody out there that has a huge advantage, please, census. Our representation, financial, and a lot of things that come from the census. And New York City and the whole general is underrepresented at 20%. Please. And it's very, like you said, it's people that are.
Thank you. Anyone else? Share.
I would second. I'm so proud of Brewster for being able to open up today from our custodial staff, our teaching department, our teachers, our building admin, our higher-ups, I think this is amazing. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for making that statement. And just the feedback is so important for us. I mean, considering that us all continue to talk about the students and we appreciate it.
All good? Okay. Um, the next upcoming meetings, our next meeting is in two weeks. Twenty eighth? Double check it. Twenty eighth? Second? Three second, okay. And let's see. So the community is welcome to email us. Any question? And for now, we are, we are in person, but we're allowing the community to participate, viewing remotely. It takes a lot of space to space everyone out properly. And it's tough, so we think this is a good solution for now. You know, see how it goes. But that and anything else in terms of upcoming meetings. It's usually, I'm so used to like beginning the school year and there's so much. But, okay. And, yeah, we don't have a second session? Good? All right, so we are fit to go. So motion for closing meeting. Thank you, Scott. Francine, my second, thank you. All of those in favor for closing meeting? Seven of us, and motion passes, seven, zero. Thank you, good night, everyone.